Regular meeting number 23 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Harden, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we're safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have Reverend Scotty Aaron. Pastor Aaron, welcome to council, sir. Please.
May we pray? Oh, Lord, our God, how excellent is thy name! God, again, we thank you for tonight. Bless this gathering. We pray now for local, state, and national government. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Aaron. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda to be published in the City bulletin. How about communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
How about resolutions from members of council? And we're going to start tonight because we have special guests with Councilmember Giuseppe Paige.
Thank you, President Klein. And yes, we have a few special guests with us this evening. I'd like to ask Tom Stoff with the Columbus Zoo to come forward. And I think we have my best friend, the bobcat, with us, and a little penguin as well. Again, we have our annual Mel Dodge Days, and it's just an opportunity for our young people who are involved in our Recreation and Parks summer programs to get the opportunity to go out to the zoo and just have a wonderful time. And Tom, we thank you for your support and for your excitement and passion for young people in our city, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairperson Page. President Klein, members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce some of my friends here. On my left, we have James that is holding a bear cat. A bear cat or a binturong. They're found in Southeast Asia. And a beautiful animal, very large. He's got his hands full here. And we also have my great friend Tiffany. We've been working together for quite a while, and she has an endangered black-footed penguin. A black-footed penguin found African penguins down in the southern tip of Africa, near Cape Town. Unfortunately, the penguins are highly endangered. There's only about 20,000 left in these colonies that they live in, in the southern tip of Africa. And it's important that we educate and inspire all of our guests when they come to the zoo or if we come to them to learn about ways that we can save endangered species and inspire people to care about this planet. We're very proud to partner and have another fantastic summer with Mel Dodge Days. Park and Recreation and the Columbus Zoo have been together forever. And if it wasn't for Mel Dodge and all of the great leadership, we wouldn't be what we are today. So we are giving our students and our community opportunities to come to the zoo. This Mel Dodge Days will start in June and end in August. We'll have thousands of students that will come in, free admission, free transportation, free lunch, and also a backpack that they'll be able to enjoy as they see the 11,000 animals that we have at the zoo. And I also want to remind you all that we are the only zoo in North America that have had and are successful in our polar bear cubs. We only have three born in North America this year, and they all happened in Columbus, Ohio. So we're very proud of what we do at the Columbus Zoo. We can't thank you enough for our partnership. We would not be as successful as we are if it wasn't for the leadership here in the city of Columbus. So thank you so much, and thank you for Mel Dodge Days because it is a vital part of inspiring all of our guests, all of our kids, to learn and to be inspired about wildlife and wild places.
Thank you, Tom. Do any of my colleagues have any additional comments? Well, again, thank you so much for coming down, and we look forward to the Mel Dodge Days this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. [Applause]
That's all I have.
Any other announcements, resolutions? Okay, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you, President Klein. I would like to invite up to the podium, please, Rhonda Peoples, who's joined us today. I don't think she has any wild animals with her. We will still allow you up, though. So today, I have a resolution to present recognizing Rhonda Peoples for her selection as Ohio's 2017 National Distinguished Principal. It's Resolution 0137X-2017. The National Association of Elementary School Principals has honored outstanding elementary and middle school administrators with this award annually since 1985. This year, we are thrilled that Principal Peoples of Wyland Park Elementary has been selected for this recognition. Congratulations. I understand that a large part of the selection process is actually peer evaluation, and that you received glowing praise from a group of visiting principals who observed you in action. That speaks volumes for you and the work you do. And if it's not too embarrassing, I want to take a moment to read a couple of their comments in their evaluations. The first one, "When introduced to Principal Peoples, we were struck with the intensity of a woman that had a clear sense of vision and a vibrant, caring personality." The second one, "Principal Peoples is entrenched in her surrounding school community, which shines through multiple programs that have been established to support parents and students, to increase parent involvement, improve attendance rates, and encourage early childhood education." And these are just two of the comments, a small sample of the praise you receive from your peers. "Columbus is so fortunate to have you working with our schools. You not only have a positive impact on your students and fellow educators at Wyland Park, but on our entire community. Congratulations again on receiving this award, and thank you for being here with us. We're truly grateful." Before I pass the mic to you, if there are any comments from my colleagues, seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Wonderful. Principal Peoples.
So first and foremost, I love what I do. It is the most amazing career in the world, as far as I'm concerned. I am truly humbled and honored to be a recipient of this recognition, and I want to thank the Columbus City Council and Councilmember Brown for recognizing me on this afternoon. I am happy to join past recipients of this prestigious award. I do want to use this platform to thank those small businesses, our business partners, and our nonprofit organizations who've joined our mission at Wyland Park and, with their shared efforts, have allowed us to provide greater opportunities for learning and growth for our students because it really is a collective effort. And this is something that doesn't happen alone. So I want to thank those who've gone with me to make great things happen for students every day and their families. Thank you.[575.54][575.54][Applause]
Thank you, Council President. I have two resolutions this evening. I would like to invite Commander Bob Meeder to the podium. Resolution 12X2017, to declare the week of May 8th through 15th, 2017, Light Central Ohio Blue Week in Columbus, Ohio. Whereas in honor of our men and women in uniform, downtown Columbus has come together to light Central Ohio blue from May 8th through May 15th. Whereas every day, over 1,900 officers of the Columbus Division of Police face the challenge of keeping every Columbus neighborhood safe with bravery and honor. And whereas the members of the Columbus Division of Police perform their duties under the direction of five core values: professionalism, respect, integrity, discipline, and enthusiasm. Whereas Light Central Ohio Blue is also an opportunity to remember those law enforcement officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. And whereas in 2016, Columbus suffered the loss of one of the finest officers, Officer Steve Smith. He will always be remembered for his dedication to this city. And whereas in 2016, Mr. William Swank began this campaign to honor the first responders in Columbus community and be resolved by the Council of City Columbus that the council does hereby declare May 8th through the 15th, 2017, as Light Central Ohio Blue Week and expresses gratitude to the win amendment of the Columbus Division of Police for their service to the city of Columbus. Commander Meeder, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown, Columbus City Council, on behalf of Columbus Division of Police and all of Central Ohio law enforcement, I thank you for this opportunity. Bill Swank is an air marshal, and he could not be here. He's flying back from Ireland, so he has an excuse. With me is Krista Trues, who actually did the graphic arts design for the campaign, which you will see on billboards and you'll also see on the posters that I brought for you. This week is very special to all of law enforcement because we recognize, this campaign recognizes the support for law enforcement and the fallen and also their families. As many of you know, I lost my brother-in-law to gunfire on December 10th, 1993, Officer Chris Clyte. So this year, we are putting on the wall Officer Johnson from Hilliard Police from Central Ohio and also Officer Smith, as you duly recognized just previously, in Washington, DC on Monday, May 15th. And I would ask all of you and all of our community members to wear blue on Monday, May 15th in recognition and support of that. You asked what would cause somebody like a police officer to run down a dark alley with gunfire when everyone's running away? And that is one word, and that is love. Love for the community, love for people they never met, and proud to serve with them. And there's men and women that are out there doing that right now. So, Councilmember Brown, I really appreciate this opportunity. City Council, sincerely, thank you, and thank you for our community, which you will now see is going to be lit blue downtown. And I know the Columbus Zoo just left. They're going to be blue, cosi. And I know that saying "Go blue" in this chambers is not something that I want to cross, but, and I won't. I will just say that, please get a blue light bulb and support law enforcement. And with that, I say thank you.
And the posters?
Posters, yes. We have, there's three different types that she created. So, will we hand them out?
Please. Are there any questions from my colleagues?
Please, President Klein, absolutely.
I just want to take a moment to echo the sentiments that you have expressed, Councilmember Brown, as well as to you, sir, for all the bravery and heroics our men and women of the Division of Police put their lives on the line and go through every single day. And certainly, the anniversary of Officer Smith's death, as it relates to the Columbus Division of Police, I think, is a reminder of just how difficult and tough being a police officer is. And we thank you for your service and putting on behalf of this Columbus City Council, and I know you representing the Columbus Division of Police. I see Chief Jacobs, former chief, Distel Swag here, and the heroic efforts and the bravery and the courage that the Columbus Division of Police displays every single day, and the professionalism, and we are grateful for that sacrifice and for that line of work.
Thank you.
Are there any questions, comments? If not, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. I would like to point out also that the Police Memorial will be held at Genoa Park on May 18th at 8:00 PM, and all are welcome to come and participate. I would now like to invite Dr. Stephen Douglas and his wife, Dr. Ellen K. Douglas, to please come to the podium. Resolution 109X2017, to recognize Dr. Stephen A. Douglas in honor of his 42 years of distinguished service with the Columbus Division of Police. Whereas Dr. Stephen Douglas is a native of the Near East Side of Columbus, an alumni of Eastmore and North High Schools and the Ohio State University. Dr. Douglas is a veteran of the United States Army, serving during the Vietnam Conflict. He is a recipient of two Bronze Stars and a Purple Heart. Whereas Dr. Douglas began his career as an educator at South High School after receiving his master's degree. He was employed at Columbus Area Mental Health and Southwest Mental Health, ultimately, whereas Dr. -- in retirement, yeah, that's right. Dr. Douglas looks forward, oh, we got this all wrong here. I'm sorry. Where he earned his PhD in psychology from the Ohio State University in 1976 and was licensed in 1978. Whereas in 1975, Dr. Douglas began teaching a class on behavioral science to cadets with the Columbus Division of Police. He has been involved in instruction of every recruit class up until March of 2017 for a total of 72 classes. And I would like to note that, to add, that Dr. Douglas provided instruction for every member of the police division with the exception of two officers, Lieutenant Carl Barth, who served the division for 55 years, and Sergeant Theodore Biggers, who's been with the division for 43 years. Whereas in 1980, Dr. Douglas developed a partnership with Dr. J. Nick Marzella and began to provide confidential psychotherapy for police officers and their families. He developed fitness-for-duty evaluations, critical incident debriefings, law enforcement pre-screenings, and trained officers on effective ways to support their colleagues and families in case of injury or loss in the line of duty. And whereas Dr. Douglas has had a long and successful career in his private practice and as a public speaker, traveling throughout the country, no matter how busy he became, he always made time to provide counseling and emotional support to the men and women of the Columbus Division of Police. In his personal life, Dr. Douglas has enjoyed a loving marriage to his wife, Dr. Ellen K. Lyle. The two have two sons, Todd and Mark Douglas, and will be celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary in September 2017. Dr. Douglas has always lived by the simple axiom, "In life, adjust your expectations, but keep your standards high." Whereas in retirement, Dr. Douglas looks forward to traveling and spending time with his family, in addition to continuing his hobbies of reading, exercising, and volunteering in the community. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby express its appreciation for the outstanding contributions that you have made by Dr. Stephen Douglas during his 42 years of public service to the city of Columbus, and this council congratulates him on retirement. If there are no questions, I move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And if I may, I'd like to also recognize some individuals who are in the audience. We have Chief Kim Jacobs, if you please rise. Also Deputy Chief Becker, Deputy Chief Quinlan, Commander Bob Strausbaugh. Also present, our former chief, Walter Distel Swag. Also, former Deputy Chief and current Chief of Police, Stephen Gamble, Genoa Township. All here in acknowledgement of you, sir. Thank you all very much for being here this afternoon. At that, Dr. Douglas, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, Ellen and I want to thank you, the leaders of the city of Columbus, and the ones that have gone before you, for creating a city that we have always lived in. We've traveled the world, but always came back and intend to stay and intend to enjoy the safety and the culture of Columbus. And for you and all your predecessors, we give you great thanks for that. My time with the Columbus Police Department and Ellen's time counseling family members and police officers on the department has been nothing but pure joy and pure love. We have been blessed to have been a part of this department, and everywhere we go in the city, the members of this department have been wonderful, classy, and loving to us through all these years. You have here, and I've traveled America, one of the most unique police departments that I've ever been around. When I travel and see other departments, I have myself, find myself saying these words, "Oh, we don't do that in Columbus. We don't do that in Columbus." And on the other hand, I find myself saying, "We've been doing that for 25 years. Where you been in Columbus?" So to the chief and to all of you, we really say it's been an honor, a privilege, and a lot of fun to be a part of the Columbus Police Department, and thank you very much.
Doc, Deputy Director Stewart, I know you were in Dr. Douglas's very first class. Would you like to make a few comments, sir?
Thank you, Councilmember. I was just trying to hide that. Council President Klein, City Councilmembers, you'll not find a better person than this man. I could tell some jokes and some stories, but I choose not to do that at this time. And the reason you find all of these people behind us, former police officers and current police officers and supervisors, is either he owes them money, or they respect him, and I would think it's the latter. Steve, all the best to you, my friend. I'm going to miss you, pal.
Any comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.[1313.34][1313.34][Applause]
That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, I have one resolution and one community update. First, I would like to present this evening Resolution 0142X-2017. While I talk about it, if Lorraine Winters and Dr. Rick Westerfield, if he wants to come up, you don't have to, from our City's Division of Water, please come forward to the podium. Tomorrow is the 10th Annual Children's Water Festival at the Franklin Park Indoor Adventurers' Center from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. This festival has and will be an opportunity to educate students from Central Ohio about the importance of clean water from stream to tap and back again. Students will participate in hands-on educational demonstrations led by staff from the City of Columbus's Departments of Water and Sewage and Drainage, and joined by other local agencies, including the Ohio State University, the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, and the Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District in a day of learning and fun for all. I know I look forward to attending and congratulate the Division of Water for putting this event on for the past 10 years, as I truly believe that promoting environmental stewardship and awareness of our valuable water resources through interactive displays, hands-on activities, and fun workshops is an important endeavor that will enhance the mindfulness and protecting our environment now and in the future. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I'm going to turn it over to Lorraine before we advance, but any comments you may have?
Thank you. On behalf of the Central Ohio Children's Water Festival and the Columbus Department of Public Utilities, I would like to thank Council President Klein, Councilmember Stenziano, and all members of council for this recognition. Tomorrow, we will host the 10th Annual Children's Water Festival, where over 600 Central Ohio 5th graders will come together to learn about the value of clean water. With hands-on activities brought to you by the Columbus Department of Public Utilities and our partners, which include the Ohio State University, the Ohio EPA, and the Franklin County Soil and Water Conservation District, and many volunteers, we're able to offer students an insight into the value of clean water and how we treat it from source to tap. We very much appreciate this recognition, your support, the support of Mayor Ginther, and all of council. Thank you very much.
So thank you, and I don't know if any of my colleagues have been there before, but 5th graders and trying to excite them about water is a challenge. I learned the secret is talking about Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles from my perspective, but the display and the engagement from the division and those partners is truly appreciated. If there are no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Congratulations, and again, look forward to seeing you both tomorrow.
Thank you.[1521.64][1521.64][Applause]
President Klein, I also want to remind our residents that in addition to this week being National Drinking Water Week, a time to reflect on the vital role clean, safe drinking water plays in our lives, it's also the week for the 36th Annual Public Service Recognition Week, a time to honor the men and women who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. Many of these individuals work overnights or holidays in some of the most stressful and uncomfortable conditions imaginable. I encourage government leaders and public servants from all backgrounds to participate by showing appreciation to their employees and colleagues and by sharing stories of excellence that they've experienced in public service. Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. Are there any comments by our municipal elected officials, auditor dorian, treasurer's office, city attorney Pfeiffer? I don't see anyone here from the judiciary. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, will we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Clerk Blevins, will you now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Public Safety Committee ordinance is 1076 and 1089-2017. Technology Committee ordinance is 1024-2017. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1093-2017. Zoning Committee ordinance is 1159, 1171, 1183, and 1186-2017.
Thank you, clerk. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent. Will you please read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 143X and 144X-2017. Finance Committee ordinance is 735, 831, 907, 950, 1119, and 1156-2017. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 1021 and 1108-2017. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 1079, 1092, and 1188-2017. Education Committee ordinance 1053-2017. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 1028, 1077, 1082, and 1149-2017. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 988, 1055, 1078, and 1120-2017. Housing Committee ordinance is 1083, 1099, 1100, 1101, 1102, 1103, 1104, 1105, 1106, and 1121-2017. Technology Committee ordinance 596-2017. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 543, 814, 881, 921, 943, 944, 954, 979, and 1035-2017. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance is 495 and 1036-2017. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0043, 84, 85, 86, 87, and 88-2017.
Thank you, clerk. We do have two speakers on the consent action portion of the agenda. The first is Nathaniel George Wilkins, speaking not March whether for or against, but it's in consent, 1101-2017.
1612 Ellington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of the vacant property in North London area. 37, 39, Linwood Avenue. I would just like to know what's going to be done with the property and how long that it has sit in the land bank and what would this property be used for? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Can the Department of Development connect with Mr. Wilkins to make sure he gets his questions answered about 1156, please? Or not 1156, it is 1101-2017. Our next speaker is Holly Borgese from the North London Area Commission. Thank you for coming down. Thank you for coming down to council. Looks like you're speaking in favor of 1156-2017?
Yes, I am. Holly Borgesi, North London Area Commission. On behalf of the commission and the firefighters at Station 16, we just want to thank you for planning to build them a new station. It's been a long time coming. I know they'll be really grateful, and we hope that you'll include the firefighters and the community in the design plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgesi. While we have you at the mic, any questions or comments for the commissioner, Councilmember Stenziano?
Thank you, President Klein. I do want to compliment the community's ongoing and the commission's ongoing engagement. As a newer member, heard loud and clear the desire for those firefighters to have a better home, one that reflects the community, and I've appreciated working with the administration on their commitment to making that happen. And so, it is a process. The real estate took some time, but really have appreciated the department's engagement and look forward to that engagement continuing.
We appreciate your hard work on the property part of it, too. We know that was really difficult, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, but I think-
Hang tight for a second, Councilor-
Director Lombardi can certainly speak to the issue of the engagement with regards to the firefighters being engaged and offering ideas and suggestions on the design work. Director Lombardi, would you like to make any comments?
Sure, thank you. We are engaged with Chief Ballard at this time to discuss the design and what the firefighters would like to see, and I'm sure we'll also engage the community as we continue to design that firehouse.
Thank you.
Before Ms. Borgesi sits down, any other questions or comments for Ms. Borgesi? Thank you for your service to the city in the London area. Thank you. Any questions or comments about the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion for approval of those items designated as consent? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Consent action portion of the agenda carries. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee, and President Pro Tim Tyson's absence, Councilmember Harden will read this committee. Councilmember Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Finance, we have ordinance 0736-2017 to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management on behalf of the Real Estate Management Office to modify the existing facilities management agreement with Paradigm Properties of Ohio LLC for professional building management services and building operating expenses at the Jerry Hammond Center and Municipal Court Building, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,028,611 from the Property Management Fund, and $1,159,110 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the modification of the contract with Paradigm Properties of Ohio LLC, and extends it for a two-year term due to significant construction and renovation projects currently underway at both the Jerry Hammond and the Municipal Court Building. Any other comments to add from Director?
Thank you, President Klein. Councilmember Harden, that is correct. We did extend this contract for two more years so that we can continue with some of the work that we're doing at both of those buildings, and we anticipate a rebid of this contract within the next 18 months, so that's why we wanted the two years so that we could have an opportunity to make sure those projects are getting done, and then we can rebid that for the next, I think it's five-year contract usually. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Further question or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0960-2017 to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Fleet Management Division to establish purchase orders from previously established universal term contracts for the purchase of automobiles, light-duty trucks, and associated vehicles for upfitting parts, services for use by various city departments, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders with the inside public sector for the purchase of Panasonic HD arbitrators and necessary hardware accessories to be installed on police interceptors in accordance with the terms and conditions of the State of Ohio Cooperative Contract to authorize appropriation and expenditure of $4,590,977.77 from the Special Income Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Fleet and Management Division to establish purchase orders for the acquisition of the automobiles like trucks, light-duty trucks, and as well as the upfitting that the title spoke of. There are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all for Finance. Council President, is it all right if I move to Public Service? Thank you. This evening in Public Service, we have 0972-2017 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fees, simple unless there are real estate necessary, to timely complete the Warner Road Public Project, and authorize the city attorney to spend funds pursuant to an existing auditor certificate. This ordinance allows the city attorney to acquire real estate in order to complete the Warner Road Improvement Project from Hamilton to Harlem. We are paying just under $9,000 to purchase this land. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And lastly, I have ordinance 1030-2017 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fees, simple unless there are real estate necessary, to timely complete the citywide curb ramps public improvement project. As the title states, this ordinance is another action to acquire land to complete critical city improvement, ramp improvement project. This acquisition is along Shrock and Agler Road. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair Harden. The next committee is Health and Human Services, and President Pro Tim Tyson's absence, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, in Health and Human Services, we have ordinance 0730-2017 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Primary One Health for the provision of medical director services, to authorize the expenditure of $30,000 from the Health Department Grants Fund, and to waive relevant provisions of the Columbus City Code related to competitive bidding. The Board of Health has a need to contract for medical director services from Primary One Health. This contract will provide medical director services for the Women's Health and Family Planning Clinic at Columbus Public Health. The Reproductive Health and Wellness Grant Program must provide that family planning medical services will be performed under the direction of a physician with special training or experience in family planning. The Women's Health and Family Planning Clinic currently contracts with Dr. Jeffrey Marable, a board-certified OB-GYN with Primary One Health, to serve as medical director. This ordinance extends that contract for the period from April 1st, 2017, through March 31st, 2018. Services to be provided include oversight for the medical functions of the clinic, gynecologic exams, contraceptive services, screening and treatment of STDs, and on-call services for patients. Dr. Long, can you please talk about this contract and why competitive bidding was waived?
Good evening, President Klein, Councilmember and Council Acting Chair Brown, and members of council. Absolutely, this is an ongoing relationship for our Women's Health Clinic. We determined a need some time ago to have a medical director who was specially trained in this area, and we did actually go out and look for vendors and bidders at that time, Primary One Health, and they're actually, it is their OB-GYN, medical director, who actually were the successful bidder some years ago, and so, we engaged in that relationship. It has worked out well, so we are continuing and proposing to continue that relationship with Primary One Health for Dr. Marable's services.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Long. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee is Public Safety, chaired by Councilwoman Mitch Brown. Chair Brown?
Thank you, President Klein. We have 1095-2017 to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to contract with the Franklin County Board of Commissioners and expend funds for the use of the Franklin County Corrections Centers for the housing of prisoners, to authorize the expenditure of $3,900,000 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director Stewart, would you speak to the daily cost and what it all includes, please?
Yes, Council President Klein, Councilmembers, Councilmember Brown. This particular contract was first initiated in 1994 with the county commissioners and is only amended periodically to reflect an increase in the per diem for individuals that are housed as prisoners arrested by the city in the county jail. Approximately 38,500 jail days, and that's derived as a result of a formula that's put forth by the federal prison system, that reflects that amount of jail days, roughly. The services that are included in this per diem are intake processing, medical care, housing, food, oversight, we're actually the guardian of prisoners, facilities cost, and again, it's all determined by a federal formula. The contract, as we see it now, just reflects a continued per diem of $79 a day per prisoner. Now, some prisoners are only there for a day or two, some are there up to a year, so it doesn't, I can't give you the specific numbers exactly how many prisoners are incarcerated with the county, but it's reflected by that 38,500 number for jail days.
Thank you. The $79 a day is not recommended for anyone who wishes to go spend time there in the sense of being incarcerated, though you will get three squares. But there being no further questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all I have, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee is Recreation and Parks, is chaired by Councilmember Page. Councilmember Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. At Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 0969-2017 to authorize the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract for hosted software maintenance and support of the ActiveNet software application with the Active Network LLC, to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the Recreation and Parks Department Operating Fund, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code. The Director, if you could speak briefly on why they're requesting that we waive the competitive bidding provisions?
Councilmember Page, members of council, President Council, thank you. Yes, this is a active software which we have a contract with. We've, it's our entire system registration software, so this is the annual maintenance for that system that we use each year.
Thank you, Director. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Ordinance 0983-2017 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with the Columbus Zoological Park Association to provide transportation, shirts, and novelties for children from the Recreation and Parks Playground Program to the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium as a part of the Melvin B. Dodge Summer Zoo Days. Our friends from the Columbus Zoo were here a little earlier just to talk more about that program, and if there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
President Klein, if I may move to rules and reference? Thank you. I have ordinance 1621-2016 to amend various sections in Chapter 4114 of the Columbus City Code in order to create testing requirements to obtain a license for home improvement general contractors. The Director, if you could speak briefly on this ordinance?
Sure. President Klein, Councilmember Page, other members of council. Several years ago, we did require home improvement contractors to pass a test before they could be licensed. However, that test was deemed to be flawed and had a lot of problems, and we went away from testing to have, in the last several years, be more of a subjective case-by-case application that a home improvement contractor would apply, and our board would decide on issuing a license. However, recently, the International Code Council and Ohio Code Council have vastly improved the testing process, came out with a much better test that we think is no longer problematic and would serve much better than to continue the subjective process that we have now.
Thank you, Director. And as far as the Board of Review of General and Home Improvement Contractors and the Columbus Building Commission, are they recommending approval of this ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Page. The final committee tonight is Judiciary and Court Administration. It's chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Chair Stenziano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, in Judiciary and Court Administration, I have ordinance 0737-2017 to authorize the Municipal Court Clerk to enter into the contract with Vasky Computer Incorporated for the second renewal year of software maintenance and support services for the Franklin County Municipal Court Case Management System, to authorize the expenditure of $54,160.59 from the Municipal Court Clerk Computer Fund. Oracle, which is used as our primary database application, runs our entire Court View database. If it were to go down, it would seriously undermine this court's ability to function, and having a support contract in place has been essential for proper day-to-day operation. As you'll see, this ordinance is being requested to be amended as an emergency to maintain unerupted database services for the Municipal Court Clerk's office. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I'd like to move to amend to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Final ordinance is ordinance 1137-2017 to authorize the Municipal Court Clerk to enter into contract with Computer Rescue 911 LLC for data storage services for the Franklin County Municipal Court, to authorize an expenditure up to $22,587 from the Municipal Court Clerk Computer Fund and to declare an emergency. These services provide data backup, recovery from data loss, and a comprehensive disaster recover system for viable data restoral for the Franklin County Municipal Court. Once again, this ordinance is being requested as an emergency to maintain unerupted data storage services for the Municipal Court Clerk's office. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I'll move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all we have this evening.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. Any other business to come before council? We do have three non-agenda speakers which we will take momentarily upon adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Regular meeting number 23, it's been moved. Second, clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Regular meeting number 24 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. All members serve on that committee. Chair Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning our zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. You may be seated. Our first variance this evening, 0167-2017, to rezone 49 East Third Avenue, 43215, being approximately .52 acres located at the southeast corner of East Third Avenue and Mount Pleasant Avenue from R4 Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is 49 East Third LLC. The proposed use is an office and shared parking. The city department's recommendation is approval. Italian Village Commission's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff?
There are not.
Thank you. I believe there is a request to amend this variance to emergency. Is the applicant or the applicant's attorney or representative present? Mr. Perry, if you could please come to the podium and talk briefly about the project and their request to amend to emergency. Thank you.
President Klein, zoning chair Page, and all members of council, my name is Dave Perry. I'm the agent for the applicant on this rezoning. The project's a very cool project in Italian Village. It's a church that, as we've all seen over the years, sometimes the churches lose a congregation, and in this case, the church has decided to sell the building. The proposal is to- The proposal is to change the use of the church building to offices, and so the rezoning request is with that purpose. The request for emergency is simply a timing matter. The person buying the church and renovating it for offices has about seven to eight months of construction work to do in the building, renovation of the building, and they need to be out of their current location by the end of 2017. So, the request is just to get started a little sooner. At Building and Zoning Services, the building permit set of drawings is ready to issue. The site compliance plan work is all done, other than zoning, stamping the plans pending your approval of the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Just real briefly, do you know the name of the church?
You asked me too fast. I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments for Mr. Perry? Thank you so much for coming down. I would first like to move to amend this variance to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
I now move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Variance 1085-2017 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 333202R Rural District, 332121B Building Lines, 333229 Height Districts, and 335305D4 C2 District Development Limitations of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 3220 Law Drive, 43204, to permit a monopole telecommunication antenna with reduced development standards in the R Rural District. The applicant is Capital Telecom Holdings LLC. The proposed use is a monopole telecommunication antenna. The city department's recommendation is approval. Greater Hilltop Area Commission's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff?
There are not.
Thank you. Is the applicant present and would like to make any additional comments?
I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all we have in zoning this evening, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Page. Any other business to come before city council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 24? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We stand adjourned.